...by the Department of Defense in 2021 and is expected to be the military's air refueling platform for the foreseeable future. Notably, this new tanker aircraft is taller, wider, and longer than the old one, which will at minimum necessitate modifications to the current base infrastructure in order to accommodate these larger airplanes. So as the Guard prepares to apply for this new refueling platform mission, Colonel Hastings and the Guard have made two requests to the city and Sky Harbor Airport specifically. First, they would like us to extend our current lease for the existing base by 10 years to support the additional military construction investments in the base, and this will provide the government with the ability to amortize any new investments that they would make in the base over a minimum 30-year term. And second, they've requested the city to sign a non-binding letter of intent to clarify parameters around proposed base expansion, and this LOI will help support the base as they compete for a new mission. And so I'll go over each of these two items in a little bit more detail on the following slides. So in terms of the primary lease amendment, the City of Phoenix has a longstanding relationship with the Guard. In fact, our records indicate we first entered into a lease agreement with the base back in June 15, 1949. And so in addition to that, we did an exchange agreement with the Air National Guard, which was executed in 1997, and that really afforded the airport the ability to expand the base to its current 60-acre footprint while clearing the way for the airport to build its third runway for future growth and expansion. And so that lease now is scheduled to terminate in 2048. So given the importance of the base to receive its continued military construction funding and to be viable for the KC-46 mission, staff is recommending subcommittee approval of a 10-year lease extension to the primary base. And rent would continue to be at $1 per year with no adjustments or increases. And the Guard has agreed to a lease stipulation that they will early terminate the lease if the federal government determine the base is no longer needed for aeronautical purposes. And what that really means is that the base would no longer have a need to access Sky Harbor's runways or taxiways for their mission. And so I'm also happy to announce that as of a couple of weeks ago, we've agreed to the terms and have executed a non-binding letter of intent with the Guard to support their interests in base expansion in order to support their new mission. As you might imagine, there are a number of terms and conditions contained in this eight-page document. Some of the highlights include the need to create usable acreage to relocate the South Cargo Airlines to free up space for base expansion. And given Sky Harbor is landlocked, the Union Pacific Railroad must agree to the terms with the city to permit trenching of their mainline rail on the north side of the airport, and this will position the airport to attempt to acquire land further to the north in order to accommodate those South Cargo tenants and additional cargo tenants. And the federal government must also agree to base a minimum of eight KC-46 aircraft at the airport. And that makes sense because there's really no need to expand the base unless you have that new mission. So that's also included in the LOI. And then finally, the government will agree to increase the Air Force Joint Use Agreement to at least $574,825. And what that's meant to do is to account for their preferential use of the additional acreage that we would afford to them, as well as address the impact of that new mission on the airport. And so I think we're in an excellent position to work together and support the Guard's continued presence at Sky Harbor. Their mission is incredibly important to our national security, and we understand also as an airport operator the importance of keeping Sky Harbor well-maintained and compatible to support this mission. So I do want to thank Colonel Hastings as well as her predecessor, Colonel Donaldson, for their professionalism and their collaborative approach to working through these issues with the city and the aviation department, and we wish them the best of luck with their application process. And so with that, staff is requesting the Transportation, Infrastructure, and Planning Subcommittee recommend to the full city council approval to amend ground lease 1899 with Air National Guard. And First Chair, if I might, I would love the opportunity to turn the floor over to Colonel Hastings to say a few words about the base. Colonel?
New to the meeting. Good morning. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to our proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know how much background you have on this, but this initiative, the extension of the terms of 10 years is a priority so we can work with NGB and continue to build our infrastructure with military construction money. The secondary issue of base expansion is looking strategically to the future and the aircraft we'll need here at Sky Harbor and throughout the West Coast as we look to the future fight in the Pacific. I am absolutely happy to answer any questions you have. I don't want to waste your time if you have the answers already.
Yes, thank you.
Brian?
Thank you, Chairwoman. And thank you, Colonel Hastings, for being here today, and thank you, Chad, for your presentation. Can you explain how future development around the airport could impact your desire to get this mission and increase usage of the airport?
I'm not sure I'm addressing your question 100% correctly, but future mission, so the KC-135 is 60 years old. Our engineers say that it'll last 20 or more years, and the KC-135 can fit on the ramp as-is. As-is, we still need more to support mission, but that doesn't affect changes we need now. We can do that with the infrastructure, the 60 acres we have. But as we look forward to the future and the next tanker, which we hope to get in eight years, it's 20 feet wide or 30 feet longer and 11 feet higher. And it's the 11 feet that cause a problem with the runway and the development. That's why we need to go into that additional acreage. What that does for the community, so that builds our mission, that solidifies our mission and national security in the future with gas in the Southwest for stateside mission and global mission. But what it does for the community, when we build to that, our infrastructure on the base, our manpower will grow by 50% as well. So as far as community effects, it's pretty exponential when we grow by 50% larger organization. Right now, we employ about 900 people, 300 full-time and 600 part-time, and that'll grow quite a bit.
Thank you, ma'am. Additionally, though, the development around the airport in Phoenix or Tempe, could that, the development of the area around the airport, impact potentially any decisions that might be made if that development was not compatible with our airport use?
I'm not sure I'm tracking completely. Everything we do with our mission, whether it's this aircraft or a follow-on aircraft, development around the community, we wouldn't be more restricted. We can operate as-is. I just don't feel like I'm hitting your question.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Well, I want to thank you. I appreciate everything you do and welcome. Congratulations. I do have to say, we had quite a couple years with the pandemic, and it really did play havoc on our airport. So we appreciate your patience, and I really appreciate you, Chad. I know you were working really hard to solve this, and this is a wonderful, wonderful solution. So with that, can I have a motion?
So moved, Chairwoman.
I have a second?
Second.
Second.
We got... All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carrie's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Our next item, seven, air service consulting contract award. Sarah's coming down. And Chad, you're staying. Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee, for this item, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Sarah Demery, who will walk you through it. Sarah?
Thanks, Chad. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. We're here this morning to request your approval and recommendation to the city council to award our next air service consulting contractor. Ensuring we have a robust and strong air service program is extremely important, especially as we continue to recover from the pandemic and emerge even stronger and look to further develop new routes. Strong air service also provides our community an economic benefit in bringing visitors, businesses, and investment to our community. A strong and robust air service program also keeps our airfares low, provides more direct options to Phoenix. Phoenix Sky Harbor currently offers 512 daily departures and 134 nonstop destinations, and this route map is changing by the month. I'm excited to announce that on Saturday this week, later this week, we are very excited to welcome nonstop international service back to Frankfurt, which suspended in 2020 due to the pandemic. In order to maintain a strong and robust air service program, we rely on the expertise from expert consultants. Our air service consultants provide us detailed route, airline and market data and analysis, industry intelligence, airline meeting facilitation, and scenario assessments. I wanted to take a moment to highlight some recent air service successes. Service to Frankfurt began in 2018 with a second airline intending to add service prior to COVID, to the pandemic. A second nonstop daily flight to London Heathrow was added in 2019. Air service to Hawaii and Mexico has increased in Phoenix, and we've led the way in domestic passenger recovery during the pandemic. We've added 51 new routes over the last two years. And as we like to say, Phoenix is hot, and this map really does illustrate our recent route expansion over the last few years. And as I mentioned, Mexico and Hawaii service has expanded, multiple airlines have added routes. In addition, we've seen growth and expansion to and from the Midwest. Our air service consultant has worked with us to evaluate and monitor passenger trends, which has helped us greatly with talking with the airlines and evaluating further growth and expansion in Phoenix. I'm joined today with Deputy Aviation Director Michael Hughes, who's going to talk you through the solicitation process.
Sarah, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. This solicitation was issued on December 13 of 2021, and proposals were received on January 25 of 2022. Solicitation objectives were provided to the potential proposers and included supporting the city in implementing an effective air service development program and improving domestic and international air service at Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport. These objectives are determined through consultation with our customer service consultant, air service industry trends, and passenger feedback. To be considered for evaluation, the proposers had to meet the minimum qualifications of two years of experience developing and maintaining an air service development program, and their primary consultant had to have a minimum of three years' experience developing and maintaining an air service development program at two large hub airports. Six criteria were evaluated through consensus by an evaluation panel. Selection was based on the entire proposal and the evaluation criteria for the best value to the city. The evaluation panel was not only diverse in experience, but they were well-prepared, they were very engaged, and this resulted in a selection of a contractor that will bring high value to the air service program. The panel members included the Director of the city's Community and Economic Development Department, the Director of Tourism at Visit Phoenix, the interim CEO of the Tempe Tourism Office, and Assistant Aviation Director Sarah Demery. Three proposals were received. Two were deemed responsive and moved to panel evaluation. Through panel consensus scoring, Arthur D. Little, LLC, was recommended for award. The contract term is for an aggregate five years and will begin in August of this year, and the contract will not exceed $1.875 million for the aggregate five years. And with that, the aviation department requests that the Transportation, Infrastructure, and Planning Subcommittee recommend to the city council to enter into a contract with Arthur D. Little, LLC, for air service consulting. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 It's a unanimous approval. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, for items eight and nine, the consideration of citizen petitions related to production of documents, we have Dan Wilson, our Communications Director, here to give a brief overview of these petitions.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. In this first petition, the petitioner asked the city to produce all documents related to the Phoenix Police Department's response to protests in 2020, such as emails and texts sent by specific city and police leadership, as well as outside assessments made at the request of the city leadership by organizations such as ASU, 21CP Solutions, and the law firm Ballard Spar. As the city's law firm reviewed the petition, they determined the petition qualified as a citizen petition. The contents of the petition sought production of public records and should be handled in the same manner as other public records requests. To the extent that the documents can be released, for example, they're not privileged or confidential, those documents should be released. Once this decision was made, the information was sent to my office, where staff entered it into the public records request system found at phoenix.gov PRR. The communications office is coordinating a response with multiple departments, including the police department's public records and services unit to produce the requested police records. Staff will contact the requester with any questions or needed clarifications, and then again, when the records are ready for inspection and purchase. The public records request will be processed in accordance with Arizona Public Records Law, RS 39121. Any questions?
I think we'll take the speakers first.
Sure.
And then there may be questions after that. And I think we'll start with Mr. Lewis, the petitioner. Welcome.
Can y'all hear me? Beautiful. Thank you for hearing this petition. An additional portion of the petition was the request for a comprehensive report on this spending. We have been getting requests for additional funding to fill policing shortages. We have been getting requests for overtime to cover riots that never happened, to suppress First Amendment protesters' rights. And I think it's our fiscal responsibility as a city to know how much these indiscretions from our highest-paid budget item department are costing us as a city. And I don't think that's a partisan decision. That's something that y'all should just have and know. We're going to get these record requests, and we can write our own report, but I promise you, you would rather write that report yourself. Because, one, it is your job. Regardless of who is investigating you, we elected you to do work, not to cover your own butts. Okay? So this is your job. You should do it. Two, if we have to release a report about how council was unwilling and unable to take a clear look at the cost of the Phoenix Police Department's violence and indiscretion in our community, then what are you going to look like as elected officials? You're going to look like people who are scared of doing what needs to be done in the face of deep injustice, in the face of runaway costs, and in the face of cop cover-ups. So thank you so much for doing the bare minimum the law required of you to do. I see we have a quorum here today. My councilwoman, Vice Mayor Laura Pastore, is not here, and I'm bothered by that with my last 10 seconds. So I'm looking for the report. If you don't write it, we will. Thank you.
Just for the record, she is on the phone.
Okay. I just don't hear, I hear three yeses, and I don't see your name up there. So it's hard to know if y'all aren't hearing your videos off.
I'm right here.
Okay.
She just said hello. Why don't we take Karen Olson? She was the second petitioner.
Hello, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just going to take a moment because, woo, thank you, Ben, for sharing your voice as well. And it's really helpful to see what has been going on. The only information I had had was that the petition had been moved and would be at this Subcommittee. So I'm delighted to get more information. So I am here today in solidarity with people who have been directly impacted and harmed by Phoenix Police Department since 2020 specifically, to ask you all to vote yes to bring the matter to the formal Phoenix City Council meeting to ensure the city produces a report on the cost thus far of responding to PPD's misconduct against protesters in 2020. Transparency from Phoenix Police has been asked, pleaded, and demanded for by Black and directly impacted leadership for decades. We continue to demand transparency and accountability from the city and the Phoenix Police Department. On February 25, 2020, I sat in those council chambers that Ben is sitting in today, and I watched three of you listen and believe community organizers and vote to create the Office of Accountability and Transparency. Then in May and June of 2021, you made sure that the OAT was funded. Today, I implore you once again to be on the right side of history and vote yes so that this grave issue gets the attention it deserves. Right now, it seems Phoenix PD is covering their tracks and doing their best to hide proof of their misconduct. That is how I perceive what they are doing. I know that there are a couple of you councilwomen, I believe Ann and Deborah, that you're pro-police, and that makes sense, that you would want them to be held accountable for misconduct as well. We know what they've done. This info is public record, as you all have said, and it benefits the city to honor our demand for transparency and accountability and produce this report. I just thank you all so much for voting yes. Please, don't make us bear the burden of this.
We have some additional people here to speak in support. Anisia Groves?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So, given the ongoing scandals involving Phoenix PD, MCAO, and even a certain member of your own council, it's perfectly reasonable for the public to want transparency and accountability around the city's response to these 2020 protests. And I do appreciate that you're responding by making attempts to produce some of the records. But I've been struggling to understand why it has taken this long and this much pressure to even begin to address these concerns. There's overwhelming evidence of collusion, corruption, and unconstitutional acts by those involved. But it's like, it's been like pulling teeth. Why? Maybe you've convinced yourself it's not your problem, or that it's too messy, or you believe you've trusted already by throwing all this money at third-party investigations, all of which would be understandable human responses, even though they are, to be clear, harmful responses. And the longer it takes to move beyond producing these minimum reports that we've asked for, it gets harder and harder for us to... it gets harder and harder for us to not feel suspicious, that the silence goes deeper than fear or complacency. So, I just, I hope that you're going to go further. I hope that you'll vote yes today, and that you will, yeah, like, actually move toward real accountability, as we've been demanding for, gosh, a few years now, at least, around this particular issue. So, and don't forget that the original reason we're all here in the first place is that people were demanding for constitutionally-protected means that the police stop killing Black and Brown people. Don't forget that, that's the real reason we're here, and that hasn't even begun to be addressed either. But please, please vote that we can at least get a chance for some answers.
We have one last speaker, Patricia?
Hi, thank you, city staff and council members, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Great. Are we talking about Agenda Item Number Eight and Nine currently, or just Agenda Item Eight?
Both.
Both, thank you. I didn't realize you had collapsed those Agenda Items. I am here also to implore each of you councilmembers, Guardado, Stark, O'Brien, and Pastor, to vote yes to get these very important petitions onto the formal City Council. I know that Chris Meyer has all but gagged each of you and said we absolutely cannot talk about anything under current litigation, I heard that mentioned in the rules this morning. I know also you're each aware that the city is in charge of the current lawsuit. You could easily end litigation immediately and pay reparations to the victims of Phoenix Police violence. Also, I know you're all clearly aware that all of the requests we are making and really having to jump through hoops, misswork, to be here and get these items talked about, it's all public record. And like Ben mentioned, we will, we will submit the requests, we will get the information, but it looks so bad for city councilmembers and upper-level city staff to evade these accountability measures and to ultimately condone and support Phoenix Police Department's egregious violent misconduct. From the 2020 protests, from the 2017 protests with the challenge coin, Chief Jerry has early retired? I mean, do any of you sitting there even actually believe that? She is fleeing the city because the police department is burning themselves to the ground. Please vote yes to get this on the formal agenda where it can be heard, the attention it deserves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Subcommittee members?
Councilwoman Stark, this is Vice Mayor Pastor. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My question is to staff. These petitions are asking for public records pieces. So, if we vote yes on this, does it move out of committee and move to council? Or we vote yes on this, and then you can produce these documents?
So, no matter what vote happens today, we are, we will produce these documents. We have submitted this as a public records request. That process is already in, in the works, and these documents will be provided.
So, this is, what the request in this petition is already moving? That's what I hear you saying?
Correct, yes. But as a public records request?
Okay, but I guess what my point is, is it's been submitted as a public records request. If we vote yes on this, then we just move it to the full council? I mean, it's already moving, I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to look to the Assistant City Attorney for some advice on this one.
Sure. Madam Chair, Councilmember, if you choose to vote under this, you'll, you'll refer it to staff to treat it as a public records request. It came in as a citizen petition, it is set up as a public records request, and we're going to handle it as a public records request, and so, you're, and as, as Dan said, it's already been handled that way, and whatever vote you have, you do today, you'll just refer it to staff, and it'll continue with their work.
Madam Chair, Vice Mayor, this is Mario Punyagua, just wanted to add that, that no action is necessary by the Subcommittee today. You could still choose to take action, but it's not necessary as the public records request is moving forward and being processed.
So, in essence, you're carrying out what the request was.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm just hearing that there is no action necessary, but if we wanted to have an action, then we could do it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have one. Okay, Councilwoman O'Brien?
Thank you. If this committee, Subcommittee were to take action and move it to, it would move to the City Council Agenda, is that correct, staff?
Madam Chair, Councilwoman O'Brien, if, if that is the action that's desired of the Subcommittee to move this forward to the City Council for further discussion, then, then that's what would happen. That would need to be the motion, but as I said, no action is necessary at all for the, for the request to actually be responded to in the public records request.
Because it is being processed as a public records request, but is coming before the Subcommittee because it was submitted as a citizen's petition, and we don't have anything in our ordinance that would provide direction if and when a citizen's petition is submitted in lieu of a public records request, correct?
Councilman, yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, then, I might, I need some more direction than here. Chairwoman, and I'm not sure if you're the right person to address this to, I would like us to look at our ordinance to clarify this, because a citizen's petition, that would seem, should not be used for public records requests, that all those requests are going to be met and answered, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I have one other question before you answer that one. Approximately, how long do our public records requests take to process? I don't know who to look at.
That, that can really depend on the complexity of the request, the number of elements, and then the custodian of record and, and their process.
Okay, and do we wait until the entire request is fulfilled, or do we do it as it comes in parts?
We can release parts as they, as they are available.
Okay, thank you so much for that question, answer.
Are there any other comments?
I have a comment.
Oh, yes.
Or a question. This is Vice Mayor. How quickly can you get the documents to the citizens of those requesting these pieces in the form of, it's a petition, it's a citizen's petition, however, it's now going to a public records request? How quickly can we get that to the, to those requesting?
I'm going to invite up Jessica Rothschild, who runs the Police Public Records and Services Unit, and Kristen Mercer, who handles, she's our Public Records Coordinator in the Communications Office, who can give us a little more guidance on, on the timeline and how we process these.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Regarding a timeline on processing public records requests, to Dan's point, it's impossible to say for sure. On average, we are receiving between 10,000 and 11,000 requests each month. So, we receive this one, we are processing it through our normal course of business. I cannot give you a definitive as far as how quickly it can be processed.
So, my question is, if we take a vote and put a timeline on it, then would it be processed faster?
It all depends on the custodians of the records. Because of the complexity of each request or each petition in this situation, there are various custodians connected to these particular requests.
So, I guess my question is, I understand that there's custodians of each of these requests, but what is our standard return? Is it two months? Is it two weeks? Is it three weeks? I wouldn't understand why it would, why it would take a public records request six months. So, I guess now where I'm thinking out loud, or that maybe we do need to look at the, feel like we do need to look at the ordinance and, and really start to define some of our public records requests, and how quickly it needs to be turned over.
Yeah, our, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee, we process about 85% within five days, but being completely honest, those are a lot of planning records that are available right when the requister asks for them. And so, some of these things that, that are compiling of information and pulling from multiple places certainly can take longer.
So, I guess I'm going back to, can we give the public confidence, because we're now moving it into a public records piece, when they would receive these items? Because this is where the, this is where the conflict starts, too.
Yeah, and certainly with your direction, we, we will do all that we can to fast-track this information.
Madam Chair, I don't know if Vice Mayor is done, but if she is, I have another comment.
I am, I am, thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I do understand the importance and desire to have information as quickly as possible. I'm also concerned, though, about setting a precedent that allows the citizen's petition to put a public records request at the front of the line over other public records requests that have come through the normal channels. I do understand the desire to have this information, but I also know that this is not an easy fill, given the 13 items requested from Mr. Lewis and the five additional items requested by Ms. Olson. So, I, you know, would hope that staff works expeditiously on all public records requests and provides them as quickly as humanly possible, but am concerned about setting a precedent. Thank you.
I would be as well. Are there any other comments? Then I guess you move forward on your public records request. Thank you.
I would like to report, and y'all have just ignored this for 30 minutes, to talk about precedent around public records requests? I would like a vote, and I would like the City Council to talk about whether they're going to produce that report. It's been pulling teeth for us to get you to do your jobs, to hold.
Thank you very much, that's enough.
Thank you very much. I'm so disappointed in y'all, I'm going to keep showing up in person, because at least you can look me in the eye.
You have that right to do it, you have the right to do it, thank you. Our next item is call to the public. Do we have any call?
There's no other call to the public.
Okay. Next item is future Agenda Items. We have a list, are there any others?
Councilwoman Stark, or Chair Stark?
Yes.
I would, I would like to bring back citizen petitions and the process, and it could be in June, or it can be in September, but I would like to bring this conversation back to the forefront and really have the conversation with the council.
Okay. We will add that.
Thank you.
Are there any other items? We're adjourned, thank you.